Yes, we are good.
Okay, let's call this regular session to order. It's Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020. Time is roughly 7:02 PM. I'm gonna recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will open it up for visitor comments. Matt, I need you to be my eyes. My computer has crashed.
Correct. We do have a visitor comment. Patrick Berkley?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
We can hear you.
Thank you. And I know my name is coming up as Sarah. That's my daughter. And our accounts get mixed up. Uh, yes, I, my daughter and I just returned home, participated in the march today. And I wanted to give my thanks to the city, for Mayor Scholl, for his letter that he wrote. And for all the good work that was done by Keith Greenway and the police department, coordinating with other law enforcement officials, the Columbia County Sheriff's Department, the Oregon State Police. I was very proud to be able to call myself a citizen of this community. And that law enforcement of our community represented themselves in our town very well. And that is basically just what I wanted to say. I know that there were many, many people concerned about the possibility of violence. But I can, from my perspective, the vast majority of all the participants were peaceful.
Well, thank you. That means very, a lot to us. And we'll definitely pass it along to our police department. We are very proud of the the law enforcement that we have. Anybody else want to comment? I'm gonna let the other count first.
I commented earlier, kind of off the, uh, to the group regarding my observations of the amount of youth that were partaking in the, in the event. And pretty much how well behaved they all were. And seemed to be having, enjoying themselves, having fun, good exchanges, more smiles than frowns. And I think the signage that they had was quite appropriate. I, I was, I enjoyed that. I felt good like Patrick did. I felt that this is, this is, this is turning into a good thing. And I don't know where it's at now. As soon as, as soon as this adjourns, I think I'll go mingle on the street and see, see what's up out there. I can hardly wait.
So, yes, um, you know, public, again, Patrick, thank you for that comment. Public safety is our number one concern that was, you know, and looking out for our small businesses. Many were in fear of, and fear did not rule, it seems like, which I'm glad it didn't crop up. I am so grateful it didn't. So, thank you for your, your comment there. Any other visitor comments?
It was interesting that the chief started organizing this. I talked to him Monday morning and he was well underway. And I believe he was discussing with you too, John, about what to do. So he's, this has been a long, well-planned operation. We're having some problems on Old Portland Road. It seems some of the deer are coming out. And we've got outer towners who haven't seen deer before, so be careful.
Okay, is there any other visitor comments? Matt? I can't see. Do I still got you?
Sorry, Mayor. I'm trying to get ahold of Quentin. Looks like he has raised his hand. But he is still muting himself, so. Quentin, are you there? I'm not sure if City Council has access to their email right now. Quentin did have some comments about the waterfront developments. I did forward those to John, Kathy, and the entire City Council. Mayor, if you would like, I can read them. Otherwise, okay. So this is from Quentin Carlson. Says, "I am late in the game, but here are quick thoughts. A, since the waterfront has been opened as a temporary park, I have seen the community take great advantage of it. This area has now become a treasure for many of us. At the moment, the waterfront belongs to the entire community. To me, if this were developed for residential and commercial use, it would be taking, stealing, a community treasure and putting it into the hands of a few. The great benefit as a current park is that people can get away from the buildings and the city, yet still be close to town. If this area gets developed, the city will unlikely ever be able to acquire a central park again. I suggest the aim be put, the aim to put this treasure in the hands of the community, not the few. Comment B, the Chronicle quoted a city rep as wanting to bring people to our town with the development. What is the aim? To bring tourists or to bring foreign demographic to fill in the central waterfront? Thus, changing the tone of the city. C, has anyone done market research on what tourists want when they come to St. Helens? And D, again, I believe a St. Helens Central Park would be the best draw for tourists." That is the end of the comments.
Okay. So, there's been a lot of planning done around that. And the park is expanded in the planning. And yes, we have done analysis. John, do you, could you speak a little bit just on that? I mean, we've, we've had lots of analysis say we need some living space down there to make our small business, which we have a ton downtown already as well.
It's not one or the other. I think that's the conclusion of all the public outreach that we've done is that there's enough to accommodate both as far as having, you know, access along the waterfront and trails and boardwalks that connect and go other places. And still having opportunity to, private investments and the density, the critical density that needs to happen to activate the downtown core. And the tourists.
And if I'm, yeah. If I'm correct in speaking, I think the expansion of public land is about six acres, real close, is what was give or take.
Yeah.
Yes. Yep. So, six acre expansion of that park. So we, yes, we are with you on that. I think we have a very good, even balanced vision that has been well-vetted throughout the community. Appreciate your comment, Quentin. Okay, other visitor comments? Okay. Seeing none, right, Matt?
No, I believe we are good. If any, if any of the community members do want to say something, they can always email myself, Kathy Payne, or our city recorder, or John Walsh, our city administrator, and we will forward those comments as written to the City Council.
Okay, appreciate that comment. All right, so we're gonna start out with a resolution. A, Resolution Number 1885, a resolution of the City of St. Helens declaring the city election to receive state revenues. B, Resolution Number 1886, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of St. Helens, Oregon adopting budget, making appropriations, and levying taxes for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020. C, Resolution 1887, a resolution to authorize application for community development block grant funds for COVID-19 emergency, small business, and micro enterprise assisted. D, Resolution Number 1888, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of St. Helens adopting an agreement with unprecedented employees, unprecedented employees of the City of St. Helens. And E, Resolution 1889, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of St. Helens, Oregon amending the city employee compensation plan for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020.
Move we adopt Resolution Number 1885 through 1889.
Second.
Okay, motions been made and seconded to approve Resolutions 1885 through 89 as read. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We've got three. And all opposed?
I was muted. I'm aye.
Okay.
I was pushing the button and not getting a response. Sorry.
All right, Councilor Topaz?
I said, "I, I got a picture of Zoom. I don't have your pictures on my screen anymore." They went away.
Okay, but you, but you're an aye. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So it's unanimous. Okay, author, proven authorized for signature, A, contract payments.
Move we approve and authorize for signature contract payments?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve contract payments. All in favor? Aye? I heard two ayes.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay. I'm sorry, maybe it's my phone. Okay, appointments to city boards and commissions. What do we have?
I don't have any.
We don't have any this time.
Okay. All right, consent agenda for acceptance. Library Board minutes dated March 9th, 2020.
Will we approve consent agenda for acceptance? Item A?
Second.
Okay, motions been made and seconded to approve consent agenda, item A. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, loud and clear, all opposed? Hearing none? All right, consent agenda for approval. A, work session, executive session, and regular session minutes dated May 6th, 2020. And B, accounts payable bill list.
Will we approve consent agenda for approval, items A and B?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda A and B. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, what do I have to report? Well, it's been a very stressful last few days working closely with the police department, just ensuring public safety. I have never been so consumed by so many concerned citizens about a particular, um, event in our community. It was overwhelming. There was a lot of people on both sides reaching out about safety. And I'm glad to hear that our officers did a wonderful job. I was very, 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 very happy with the work they put in to ensure safety for all. You know, COVID is still happening, you know. That's our big reason we had our meeting tonight was we're trying to get $150,000 for our community, Columbia County. And, you know, and I want to just talk a little bit about what, what has been going on in our country. You know, the St. Helens School District has been, um, what is called Connect St. Helens. And it's mirrored off of Discover Battleground. And it talks about the hard issues of bullying and racism and sexual, um, oh gosh, you know, you know what I'm trying to say. But it, 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 yes, it, 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 it's a really good program. It has been going on now for a couple of years, about a year and a half. And they just recently got some more funding for it. And what I can tell people, if they really want to dive in and make a difference in this community, is to check out Connect St. Helens through the school. There was a lot of different leaders there. It's facilitated. It's me using my experience as my, overcoming my experiences with, with areas of my life and sharing them with people and connecting through my story and allowing them to open, open up and share their thoughts. And it's very intimate. There's a little bit of fear involved in doing something like that. But the reward is so worth it. I encourage you, if you're listening, to please look into Connect St. Helens. Reach out to Scott Stockwell, Superintendent Stockwell, and, and find out more about that. It just is a great program and it has made a huge difference over in Battleground. And, and it works. It works. So, um, we got some work to do. We know that. And we have known that. And we have been working. And this council has addressed this issue since I've been mayor in the three years. So, um, yes, it's, uh, starts with the individual. It starts with me. It starts with my choices and my actions. And I guess what I do is I ask myself, would this be something I'd be proud of my mom to see or my kids, my children to see. I, you know, I love my children very, very much, as we all love our children. And it's their, it's really their world, you know. Sometimes I see us grown adults act like children because we're in fear. And we try to make adult decisions out of fear. And we kind of screw things up sometimes. So, um, that's what I got to say about it, you know. That's all I have to report tonight. So, we'll go with Council President Morton.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was quite impressed again with the, uh, with what I saw with the youth today, this afternoon. I was very encouraged by that. And it's kind of, you know, like, we say this all the time. We say our Pledge of Allegiance before our meetings, "One nation under God, indivisible", and the words "with liberty and justice for all." Well, those kids are taking that, that liberty and justice for all to heart. And, you know, they're well-behaved about their actions. They, they believe wholeheartedly in justice for all. You can certainly tell that. And so I was, I was very much interested in, in, in seeing that in our, in our small city. It kept, to me, it came alive. And I think everyone was quite responsible in the way they handled themselves. And to me, that was just so encouraging. So I, you know, I can't wait to get out and, and see what's left of the, of the event. I don't know if it's still going or not, but I want to get out and mingle with people a bit.
Okay.
Oh, and one other thing, Mayor, I don't want to do a go-back. I'm excited, you know, that I was talking about the youth. And here it is. I mean, they, didn't they get robbed with their school year this year? And I mean, we all have made sacrifices. And the, and the youths felt it quite a bit. But tomorrow is graduation in our community. And I'm so glad the city is partnering with the school district with that graduation. And I'm excited about that.
Yes, tomorrow, tomorrow's the cruise and then Friday is the ceremony down on the courthouse steps.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. But yes, yes. And I see they're actually gonna have some televised coverage from Channel 8 tomorrow. So, good, good, good on them. They deserve it. They've, I totally agree with you, Doug. I mean, 12 years, that's a huge accomplishment. Congratulations to them.
Yeah, our kids are the hallmark of our community at this point. I really, really am impressed with that.
Absolutely. Okay, Councilor Carlson?
I'm switching up the order today. I had a couple.
Never know where I'm gonna come from.
Like, you know, just echoing the comments of others, having lived a lot of my life in northeast Portland, it's, you know, an issue that every story is very heart-wrenching and very personal. So I'm glad that they pursue their endeavor peacefully and positively. On a second note, I have been going door-to-door with local businesses, talking to them about the grant opportunities that are coming up and asking them if there's things that we can do to assist them in getting open, if there's things they're confused on and what their requirements are for COVID. I have been forwarding the contact information for those departments that can answer those questions for them. And the chamber is looking to partner with them as well about getting reopened and having some volunteer hours every week to be a presence. And then I think everybody knew that the kids this last month planted all the planters in front of the county courthouse. Keel that out and did all those plantings. Shout out and a thank you to Means Nursery for donating five whole flats of flowers. And the Watershed Council for donating native plants. So maybe we can have more native plantings down there that will be more sustainable for our community. I look forward to other projects with the youth this summer. After all of the shelter-in-place education, they're ready to get out and do things, you know, with wearing masks and social distancing. But they miss the social opportunity of having the end of the year taken from them. I'm myself of, you know, cancer survivor and, you know, trying to do my job that I'm elected to do. I'm sad to miss the meeting tonight, or the march today. So very encouraged by all the photos that are being shared online. That is a good example to our region of that we can do things right and that we can go have our best days ahead of us. That's all I have.
All right, Councilor Locke?
A couple things, just, uh, if you remember, we canceled our, our regular burning season this year because of the COVID. And just wondering if we wanted to bring that back up because we're running into fire season here in a month or so. And we need to get the underbrush cleaned up. And I'm sure, you know, people did a lot of gardening while they were off work, but now they're back to work. So, uh, you know, maybe they got refuges that needs to be cleaned up before the summer starts. I'm not sure, you know, where, where that's at with the COVID, but we don't have too many cases around. And we probably need to check with the fire department and make sure that we're okay there. But, you know, if we could, uh, you know, have it like 16 days over three weekends here in the next couple of weeks or whatever.
I'm okay with that. I know we did close it because we never had it because of COVID and the way it attacked the lungs. But I have noticed that the county has allowed burning. So, um, yeah, I, I'm definitely okay with that. I don't know what it, you know.
The fire department.
Yep. Yeah, they'll still have to follow all the burn permit laws and all that. We're just, we're just allowing it in the city limits. They still have to go get a permit online and stuff.
You gotta get a permit and you gotta make sure it's a burn day.
Yep. Yeah. Anybody, anybody opposed to that?
No.
Okay, so let's, uh, nobody want to just make a motion so we can just make this a council decision?
Move we, yeah. Oh, go ahead, Keith.
So I move that we, uh, first of all, get ahold of the fire department and then go ahead and reschedule our, our 16-day burn period that we normally have so that people can get rid of their refuge around the house and whatnot. So, uh, we have, uh, John, look into that, make sure it's okay with everybody, and then make a decision either to do it, start, probably start not this weekend, but the following weekend. So we get put out an announcement in the paper and whatnot.
Yeah, I hope they have in the big enough window. So that was a long most, that was a very long motion. Did he, uh, did I hear a second?
Ah, you got a second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to open up burn per fire department's schedule. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Okay. Keith, what else you got?
Uh, the Public Works Director job. I think we have 15 applications in. Doug and I kind of combed through those today and wrote down our, our yays and nays. We'd like to pass that on to Kathy and John. And then maybe the four of us can get together after that and, you know, pick out some finalists for us to maybe start with Zoom meetings to start with. And then narrow it down to just a few that we could have, do interviews with. So.
Yeah, I couldn't be, I'd like to interrupt just a bit, but I certainly want to encourage Mr. Topaz and Jay Carrollson and the mayor to look through those as well, as soon as they possibly can. And.
Yeah, I was, uh, I was gonna say, that is one of my departments. So I probably should have been being, Doug, but I appreciate you guys vetting them and, and doing the insight. But I definitely want to have a look at them too. Yes, I think that's a great idea, Morton.
The good news is we got a lot of good applications.
Good, good. Um, I'll definitely have some time to look at those as well. If another council would like to meet with myself, we can do that, just to kind of look them over and have a discussion. Councilor Topaz or Councilor Carlson, it's totally up to you, um, if you're available.
We are available.
Okay. Steve, we'll, I'll get together with you and we'll look them over.
We'll get it when we get it. Right.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Jenny, Jenny, will you get together with John and maybe?
Yeah, Friday morning works for me.
Okay, all right. All right. Okay, that's it, Keith?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, all right. Councilor Topaz?
I have a list. Following up on, uh, my request for information on the kayak landing, I had a chance to talk to the Marine Board about grants. And I found out there are grants available right now. I also found out that the process to get a launching thing, docks or whatever, is about 18 to 24 a month. And the permit costs range anywhere from $900 to $1,500. But the big thing is, is a number of agencies that are in the loop for making this decision. Not only the Army Corps, the tribes, just a number of them. One of the things I had hoped, since the piece of ground where this launching, this kayak launching thing would go, was where we just put the restrooms, I had hoped some of the permits that they had used would, could be used to double-check. And one of the studies that has to be done, this ramp, is archaeological study. And I had hoped that had been done. The Marine Board didn't have any record of any archaeological studies that have to be done, at least for the kayaking, that were done. The thing that they mentioned, and it goes good with this part, in order to connect to the river, there's a number of permits, number of agencies that you have to connect to. You don't let people touch the river. It limits the number of permits. If you want people to touch the river, there's a whole bunch of permits and a whole bunch of agencies. And as Marine Board pointed out, the Columbia River is an international waterway, a state river, and a large river. So there are a lot of agencies. Okay. So both, a lot of this stuff for the small kayaking and the waterfront are the same. I, we read the lagoon, the preliminary report from Moal Forster. And a couple of things I told John that they had missed in the preliminary design of the survey, they didn't do, and it's coming back to bite them. One of the things they said was the river only goes up and down two feet. And this gets to be important. One of the problems that this water infiltration, through the fault back and forth, and two feet is a lot different from seasonal shift of 20 feet. The other thing that they did do, and they, they did not check on the digami maps, but they did verify with their. but they did verify with their borings that the landslide area is in place. There are a couple of places that feet didn't get any rock and that coincides exactly with state maps of landslides. The other problem that they pointed out was they pulled up wood from the bottom of these coring, which says the landslide area is active as y'all go. So 200 foot down, there's still some wood mixed in. Okay, I talked to John about how to get the Sneeze Screens for the library and he said to talk to Dave Elder and I talked to Dave Elder and he said he wouldn't let me talk to Roger besides Matt was taking care of it. And he would get back to Sue to tell me what to do and I haven't heard from anybody. So that's what I've been doing.
On that, I know Roger is, right now is busy, he's getting ready to help set up the stuff that we approved for the senior, seniors. So he's gonna be working on that, has been working on that and gonna be working on it tomorrow, so.
And luckily we have time on me. People were supposed to get back to me and they didn't. They could have told me that rather than have you tell me, Rick, just as a courtesy.
Sure, I, well, I'm not, I'm not making excuses for why they didn't, they didn't get back to you. I'm just, just letting you know that, I know that.
I know Roger, it was more of the connection. There's a lot going on that everybody's got three hands and needs seven, so we got no problem with that.
From I. Okay, so anything else?
Well, that, that's about it. As they say, I've been running down information and finding places where it doesn't jar with other things. So continue building this list.
Okay. All right, let's go to department reports. Let's start with Sue Nelson.
Counselor Topaz, your volume is very low and I was unable to hear what it was that you were asking from Public Works that you did not receive a response on.
Sue, the Sneeze Protection at the library has to cover a funny shaped, really long counter. And we had come up with the preliminary design and I needed to talk to Roger how to implement this funny piece of plexiglass, which is gonna be about 25 feet long. Actually, it's gonna be a number of pieces and Margaret and I and some of the librarians had discussed what the shape was. It has a couple of different functions, so.
Okay.
Do your thing.
Okay, I can, I can check on the status of that tomorrow, but I know that we don't have any plexiglass available right now.
If you call up the store, you will find out their backorder, I've already.
Exactly, we, yes, we already have some on backorder.
That was understood, they assume. But no, and we did find out they'll cut it for us. We have the equipment to bend it. But everybody is out. We've checked a number of suppliers.
That's what I understand as well. Okay, thank you for that clarification and I will check up on that tomorrow.
Okay.
I, I don't have anything further this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Let's go with, I guess Margaret will be sitting next. Trying to look at you guys on the diet.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, I guess the only, well, I have a couple of things to report. The work continues in the Columbia Center. We've had electricians in the building the last three days. Primarily pulling data lines and doing some electrical work for handicap door openers. But, and also some work with the, the hot water heater for the sink. But things just keep progressing along with the data lines. We're having two staff data lines being dropped into the Armstrong Room and our library assistants have worked out a really nice plan for offering curbside service from the Armstrong Room. And there are a couple of windows that open out onto the porch and so we're gonna have takeout windows for library books. And we have a lot of things that we have to turn back on, like all the things that people have on hold and all the things they wanted to put on hold, but we didn't allow because we had suppressed holds during this. So we have a gradual process for bringing all that back online. But I expect very soon, as, as soon as we can get that work area set up in the Armstrong Room and make sure all the computers and the telephones and the credit card machine all work. We'll be having a, having an active pickup activity there on the porch. It'll also probably expand to include things like tax forms and summer reading materials, but we'll, there's more to come. I will just stay tuned.
Excellent.
All I have.
Okay, so we'll go to our financial director and associate, what is he administrator? Yes, Matt Brown.
I think anybody knows my official title. I think it changes daily too, so. I did have a couple of things. One, on the work session this afternoon was a discussion about field rentals. And I apologize, hang on one second, I'm gonna close my door because the officers are packing up.
Yep.
I like his disappearing act.
Well, I was like Superman flying around there. I love that.
Okay, so the, I know I have a number of people waiting for me, community members and outside community members on field reservations and at the last meeting we discussed about, the parks are generally open, but we're not taking any reservations officially for the city. And I just would like.
Phase two, phase two does allow that. I was watching as part of that. So work, you and John work hand in hand because I think also maybe even some recreation stuff could potentially start opening up on phase two as well.
Okay, so the city mayor, mayor and the council you're okay with as long as if we get approved for phase two, when that happens, that field reservations would be open?
Yeah, following guidelines.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So I mean, and we're just waiting on the county to apply for that phase two. And I think it all comes down to contact, contact tracing and how, who is in charge of that, I think is the main key to that. And John will speak more on that, I'm sure, when he reports, because he watched it today.
Yep, so I will, I'll touch base with John and, and keep an eye on that. The only other thing I wanted to bring up was that we had a cleaning RFP that was done. We had two responses for that RFP. We invited both of those companies out to tour all the facilities. We are adding a couple more facilities than what we're originally doing. The current provider that we have decided not to pursue the RFP. So we would be ending that relationship with them. The contract technically goes through June 30th. And Kathy was gonna try and get in touch with them pending how long it takes us to find somebody else to take over for them. When we gave the tours to the two companies, I received information that one of the companies dropped out. And a, the other company resubmitted a bid. And for the cleaning that we are requesting, the cost in year one is about $76,000 a year. The cost in year two is $80,000 a year. Now, when I went through the RFP and kind of guesstimated what it would take for somebody to do all this cleaning, I figured about a point six, point seven FTE, which, and using the school district's custodian pay rate, I came to a conclusion even with medical and pers and retirement, the cost to hire somebody internally would be about $50,000 for a point seven. And even assuming the worst case, if I had to hire, if the city had to hire a full-time custodian, it would be about $60,000, which is still about 15,000 cheaper than the RFP. So I wanted to throw that out to the city council to see if you wanted to start going down the road of hiring somebody internally. There are positives and negatives to doing someone internally as well as positives and negatives to hiring a contractor. So I wanted to kind of get a feel from the council on how they would like to move forward.
I, quite honestly, having looked at all the buildings, I don't know how one person will do all that. All those bathrooms that often with the COVID, I don't know if one person can physically do it.
So COVID makes things a little more difficult if we're gonna start cleaning bathrooms, you know, twice a day and everything. And that's another question that we are unsure of at the moment of six months from now, are we still gonna be cleaning bathrooms twice a day? Obviously, we don't know that. So when I did the schedule initially, it was not cleaning bathrooms twice a day. So that's why I said worst case, if I had to hire a full-time.
So it was, so it was once, so it was once a day with the initial bid?
Once a day, I could probably, without COVID stipulations, I could probably, we could probably do it with a point seven, point seven FTE. With COVID, it's probably not far off from a full-time job. Both options are still cheaper than the one RFP that we officially received. But we could go out for another RFP and see if the current company is willing to stay on a little bit longer. But it's up to the city council.
Yeah, I got to thinking about that and I'm just wondering, as far as cleaning supplies and buffers and vacuum cleaners, and when you go to start buying all that stuff, is it cheaper?
The tools, it's a lot of maintenance and fixing those tools, it's a whole other.
My, my assumption with this was that if you were to hire somebody internally, you would be doing the basic cleanings and you would, you would still have to contract out the deep cleans that we do. If we want somebody to come in and do all the carpets or do all the exterior windows or something like that. Any of the deep clean stuff, you would probably still have to contract out with, you know, Stanley Steamer or somebody, you know, a local business, hopefully, that can come in and do those specialty services every six months or once a year, whatever's needed.
Buffers used at maybe our wastewater or water treatment plant? I mean, the buffer, buffer is probably a couple of grand.
Yeah, I don't know that they have ones. I'm gonna unmute Sue if she has any idea if the, I don't think the wastewater treatment plant has any kind of buffer or anything right now.
No.
No, I.
The city would, the city would have to buy one for that person. Couple of grand, that's not bad. It's not bad, but.
Yeah, and I don't know if you would just contract a company to come in and, you know, do the buffing every six months or something when.
Buffing floors, buffing floors is more than that.
We, when we talked, when we went on tour and had staff there at the water treatment plant, they said that they would like the store, the floors deep cleaned and buffed out at least once a year. So that's what they told the contract.
Stripping of, is that stripping of wax? Because that's different.
Yes, that is stripping of wax and rebuffing.
That's at the wastewater plant.
Yeah, at the wastewater plant.
Yeah.
And it was only in, and I believe it was only the bathroom that they were gonna do that in. So I don't know that we would have to buy much heavy equipment, so to speak, for this person.
If I were gonna bet on anything, I'd bet on COVID is gonna be, at least our, the requirements for us protecting against it's gonna be with us for at least to the end of the year easily.
I would bet it'll be this time next year before we're released from those requirements.
I agree.
I think the entire flu season, we're gonna be on the hook for those.
So assuming that it would be a full-time job, you were still about 15 or so cheaper than the RFP.
I mean, did you, did the staff, did the department managers, did management team have a thought process? Because this not being on the agenda, I, it's like, I kind of feel like we're out in the middle here.
Well, I was hoping we would have a work session today and it would be more of that. But we have an RFP that is currently out and one person that is waiting to hear a result. So if you want to push it off to the next meeting, that's fine and we can have more of a discussion. I just need some direction from council on where to go.
How long's the RFP been out, Matt?
It went out, I believe in early May.
Oh, so during COVID?
Yeah.
So it's been out one month then?
It was out for 30, well, let me pull up the RFP, hang on just a second. So it was put out on April 16th. It was due on May 15th. We did interviews, well, tours just a couple of weeks ago. So it's been out since April. And it.
Staff weighed in. You know, like, how did the, how does the library feel about it? The library is a big customer to the cleaning. You know, do they, would they rather do this? Do they have an opinion? Does staff have an opinion about which way we should go?
I think that the staff, the staff has a very real opinion. The staff works in those buildings, the staff understands what the processes that are needed. It's the staff that should decide this. And I, I totally, you know, we're just kind of like going, duh, what do we need? What is this? What's that? It's a, it's, this is a waste of, this is a waste of the council time. The staff should go ahead, make a decision on what to do and go with it.
Yeah, it's, it's a technical business of cleaning. This isn't passing a wet rag over something and you're done. I agree with you, Doug.
Okay, staff can meet during the, their department meeting next week to discuss and we'll come back to the council with a decision.
Correct.
Sounds good.
And.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay, Kathy.
Kathy's muted.
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for the goodies Kathy.
Oh, those were from, those were from Matt.
Wow. Thank you, Matt.
They were delicious too, by the way. Okay, John Wolf.
All right, yeah, I do have a couple of things. I'll try to be brief here. Just responding to Counselor Topaz's kayak landing project. Down at Great Clips Park, we maintain a commercial mortgage there and we've had for many years, even though there's no docks, there's some of the pile and just that exist. And there's one of them that's actually broke off fairly recently, but, but it's still there and we maintain that, that Department of State lands lease for a reason to develop that sometime in the future. And so that, a lot of the permitting challenges that are, that were brought up there, not all of them, but there's a process still, but it's much more expedited to kind of build it back if we maintain that use.
That's what I was told. So that, that matches, good.
So, and, and very timely, just today we received a fund, notice of funding opportunity for non-motorized types of facilities such as that. And there's a federal, federal, it's a $250 million pool of money for those types of facilities. So we're gonna look into that and your question or comment was very timely. On the workshop agenda, we're gonna talk about the lifting the emergency declaration and I wanted to make a comment on that because the, it does have consequences. The, I totally appreciate and understand the wanting to get back to normal and lifting that emergency declaration. But the consequences that, is that when we do that, we become ineligible to receive federal funding from FEMA and others. And it helps the county out and helps city out if we stay in that status. Not to say that we're not gonna move towards getting back to normal and other ways and moving through the governor's plan from phase one to phase two. So as we learn to understand that, but.
Because our, our declaration of emergency, it does not, it did not come with other than state mandates, right? I mean, that's basically, we didn't, we're not, we just declared the state of emergency because of the pandemic itself.
We did. We initially had a date certain and then just because of the, you know, just the process of extending it.
It was slow the curve. We all, we all understood, slow on that curve. Yes, yes. But the, what I hear you saying is that. Yes, yes, but the, what I hear you saying is that it would close off a funding mechanism, so.
Reversing that stream, those types of things.
Yep.
Works grants. So just, I think we need to check in on status every meeting that we have, and kind of keep it the way it is for now, would be my recommendation.
And doing this to the bathrooms.
The Columbia, you, bathrooms are open at the moment. We had a meeting today with the staff that's gonna operate them, we're doing some, we have sufficient PPE, we are looking at the, kind of reviewing the cleaning chemicals, the foaming, the, you know, it's really, you know, if we do this foam down, deep clean every day, that's a pretty extensive amount of labor, which also has consequences of other things not getting done, particularly being, you know, short staff in the parks. So we may have to look at reallocating some resources there to keep things looking nice.
Yeah, not just specifically the bathrooms, but just whatever phase we're in, that we don't have to lift the emergency to go to phase two.
No, 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 that, yeah.
That's right, that's right.
That was my point, the basis that the governor's rolling out does not, is not connected to us lifting the emergency.
Yeah, and I can appreciate wanting to get back to normal and lifting this declaration of emergency, but it really does have, there's, there's separate issues. And I want to say congratulations to the St. Helens Seniors 2020, it's been a really awkward year, and I hope the festivities on Friday go really well with the plaza, and I think it should be really nicely decorated, and the city is doing quite a bit with that to make that, assist and make that happen.
Yes, I would like to let the council know that we got compliments from County Commissioner on Tibular for helping out and assisting, just so all city staff and council knows that, that he recognized our efforts there and applauded them.
Yeah, a lot of coming together around all the events that are happening, so.
And Henry was a big part of us being able to use the courthouse, too, just so you know.
And that's all I have, so.
Okay, what about phase two? What about phase two, John? What did you find out there? I mean, as far as.
I probably know as much as you do at this point. I briefly read the guidance, didn't hear the governor's presentation with all the other things that were going on today, but I will.
So what I read is about, I think a lot of more government agencies are gonna be opening up, and also cities and counties, and she also recommended for bigger, more populated areas that they could do ordinances on masks, and that's her, her recommendation to larger cities. I thought, wow, you know, maybe I have to wear a mask to go into Portland, that's gonna be kind of weird, but if I wanna go to Portland, I guess I'd wear a mask, huh? So there was a number of things, I want you to look into that and adjust, I think, I think the entire council would like staff to adjust to when that phase happens, because there's gonna be a two-week gap to what we can and cannot deal. So it's, it's pretty clear, it's very in-depth, she did a general, and she said, yes, you will have to read, do some reading, but I listened to it very intently, as, as intently as I could, because she had a doctor and some other people on there, so. But the phase two can happen Friday, if the county were to apply, and I don't know if we did.
That's my understanding, yes.
I got a small go back.
Okay, one small go back.
One small go back, as many people know, the food bank was unable to do their fundraiser for empty bowls, but the wonderful Potter and the team of craftspeople that make those hand-thrown bowls are still doing that, and they are selling those through the food bank's website. So you could just buy the bowls directly from them and just make arrangements, go buy and pick them up whenever they're open. I bought some last time, and I think you just made another batch of bowls, so people can support the food bank and get some really nice pieces of art for their kitchen. I just wanted to go through that, there's, with everybody closed down, I don't know how they're promoting their event, because I know that's one of their big spring events, and everybody thinks of the food bank in the fall and not so much in the summer months, and with all the COVID and layoffs from work and waiting for unemployment, the need has never been greater, and if I can buy a few bowls and help some other folks, I'm happy to do that. So I just wanted to spread that word for anybody else that was interested, that really does, I know most of the city staff does attend empty bowls, but I thought, there's no shipping, you just push the little button and go buy and pick it up, it's pretty easy. Thanks a lot, that's all I got.
One go back.
Uh-oh. I opened it up.
Judy Thompson is organizing the ringing of the bells on the Fourth of July. So far, we've got all but one we had last year. So ring the bells.
Nice.
For more updates.
All right.
Super.
I had one less.
Okay. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to thank, thank you, the mayor and the council for sticking to this meeting tonight and getting through this, you know, the annual meeting where you're adopting the budget and all the resolutions is a, it's a milestone for me personally, and I'm sure it is for Matt and things, to kind of get things set for the year ahead financially, so appreciate that.
Yep, yep, we're moving the city forward, we understand that we, you know, we signed up for this, and we, you know, it's actually, you guys, the entire staff makes it easy to allow us to adopt ordinances and resolutions and implore you guys to do your job, and you're doing a fantastic job. I guess my one, one thing is, before I close, is just to the citizens, to just be kind to one another. We're gonna grow stronger from all this, and we are doing what we can to ensure safety for all, and we are looking forward to building our towns, both physically and mentally, to a higher standard. And we try to hold each other to a higher standard and accountable as a council, and we have adopted rules on that, and it's because we really honestly want to change for the better. So please just be kind to one another. With that, we are adjourned.